I would like to, it is six P M. I would like to call tonight's scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order. Without objections, seeing none, Councilman Secunder, will you lead us in invocation and a pledge?
Please rise. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. You have, each person will have up to three minutes to speak. If you have not filled out a card and would like to make a comment, please do so. They're in the back of the room. Before we start, I'd like to ask our clerk to kind of walk us through a new piece of hardware we have to help us with the the public comments. So Sharon.
Thank you very much. If you'll notice right here, we have a timer. We can set that timer for the three minutes that each of you will have to speak. During public hearing, we can set it for the ten minutes, for the ten minutes against. You'll be able to see it countdown. It will also have an audible alert at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, and it may make some new noises, but we've got you. Mr. Hickey. Approach and you'll have a three minutes as shown by the timer.
My name is Bob Hickey. I'm a Dunwoody citizen for about fifty years. In the most recent issue of Inside Dunwoody Magazine, our city manager wrote a fantastic article article about the importance of our city's hotels, restaurants, and retail businesses. This two-page article discussed the virtues of Discover Dunwoody, the city's marketing organization, which shared the proceeds of the eight percent tax on hotel occupancy, which generated about three point five million dollars for city use in two thousand and twenty-three. Our city manager expressed gratitude to the Discover Dunwoody team for their effective promotion of our great city as a true tourist destination. He said, I quote, "It's a great time to live, work, and visit here," unquote. With this said, I am troubled that our mayor, six council members, city manager who authored that great article, and multiple members of the city staff are conducting a two-day overnight retreat at a North Georgia resident resort in Clarksville, Georgia. I question this decision given the hotels with meeting facilities nearby and restaurants, great restaurants within our city limits that would no doubt welcome our city leaders with and staff with open arms at a discount. Why would our city leaders not take this into consideration for the effective use of a city work time and the cost of traveling three hours round trip, overnight hotels, meals that could easily total, but my estimate, tens of thousand dollars with the fifteen people who are benefiting? And no benefit to Dunwoody citizens. Especially when our city manager, who will attend this boondoggle, espouses with immense pride. It's a great place to live, work, and visit Dunwoody. I would like to point out that this upcoming retreat is not an isolated occurrence. By my research, and our city leaders and staff have traveled outside the Dunwoody city limits for meeting purposes at least the last three years. In closing, I liken the city behavior to a Costco worker shopping at Sam's, a Home Depot associate going to Lowe's. My daughter works for Home Depot and she'd be fired in a heartbeat if she went to Lowe's. Or a Coca-Cola employee drinking Pepsi. And by the way, I apologize to Discover Dunwoody, our city's marketing organization, for the hypocrisy of city leadership and staff for not practicing what they promote. They can talk the talk, but you can't walk the walk. Thank you.
That's the end of public comment because I don't have any more cards. We will have additional public comment at the end of the meeting. Next up is you, Mr. Lyndon Eric.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right, we have our monthly report ending March eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. So within the Parks Department, we have March twenty-third is Snap Dragons Garden opening reception. Also Lemonade Days is coming up next month, April seventeenth through the twenty-first. And then Food Truck Thursdays, season opener is going to be May sixteenth. Okay, all right. We're good. Okay. And then the shade structures at Brook Run Park baseball fields will be installed in mid-March. So that's should be coming up in the next, by the end of this month. We'll have those all fully installed with the installation beginning very soon. The Public Works Department, very busy within the stormwater area. City contractors will conduct a video evaluation of about seventeen hundred feet of stormwater pipe in the Dunwoody North subdivision. The Georgetown Gateway, the contractor has completed five hundred feet of curb, another four hundred and seventy-three feet of stormwater pipe, including the last three road crossings. And the new signal at Old Spring House Lane has been connected. And then we have planted thirteen trees in that area. There's a little picture of that in your report. The Ashford Dunwoody Phase One path or path Phase One, the contractor completed the first section of the sidewalk near Hammond Drive. And that's been a long-awaited project, as we all know, but it's going to be very connective in our area. And the gateway sign, we're working with some samples on that. And final submission for the construction schedule of the gateway signs for our city. The, we also began three hundred and forty feet of repair along Buckline Crossing and two hundred and seventy feet of repair at Arden Woods in that stormwater system. Under municipal court, we did have a person guilty with, it was, did not have a building permit and they were fined a thousand dollars for each of seven citations. And the reason I wanted to point that out is because as one everyone's going to know that we do, you know, take the permitting process very seriously to protect the surrounding neighbors and of course, the public safety of the of the city. And that one did go, did go all the way to court and ended in a citation and a fine. The High Street Phase One opening, the first building of apartments has now been occupied. Some of the tenants have moved into that area. Also, we have our request for proposals for the new comprehensive plan and unified development code was published in February. Work is expected on this project in May. And that should take approximately two years through the public hearing process and the public involvement process that both the new code and the comprehensive plan will have for the city. And Mayor, on that one, I do encourage that we get many, have many meetings on it with the public and go ahead and start the process now in terms of talking about it with citizens and their involvement in this, in this rewrite of the, of the code and the comp plan. Economic development continues to work on the placemaking initiatives and also our entrepreneurship program. And also focusing on Dunwoody Village area as well and include meeting with the merchants in the area and continuing to try to draw new businesses and retain businesses to the area. And along with that, they've conducted sixty-nine business retention meetings in the past month and twenty-five business recruitment meeting, meetings within that department. Communications, we have profiles of women, history mural. An artist are, that's upcoming. Also, we had the sprue expansion ribbon cutting on the ninth Saturday. Anybody who hasn't had a chance to look at that facility, please do. I walked through it the other day, very impressive with the completion of that project. And it's a huge benefit to the community to finally have additional space for those, for those arts. Looking also onto the Dunwoody Digest will be coming to mailboxes in late March and early, early April. We also have the fifteenth anniversary pin for the Dunwoody Police Department. It will be on the radar as well. Under our I T department, they, they continue, I'm not going to read through each of the items there. But I didn't want to point that out a little bit differently tonight, just to take a look when you have time and familiarize yourself with the, with the different projects that they're doing. That is our backbone of our city departments. Everybody runs off of the different products that I T puts out. Under the Police Department, we continue to operate some distracted driving details and pedestrian crosswalk details. We worked at Hammond Drive and Astridunwoodie Road, Cantillion at North Peachtree. And also we had about forty citations were issued, including seventeen hands-free violation and two vulnerable road user citations. Look through the police portion at your leisure. As, as I've mentioned in the past, the L P Rs are, you know, we continue to expand that system. I had a meeting today with P C I D and also the City of Brookhaven about some additional L P Rs in the P C I D area, just to help protect the area that we're, that we share borders with two other cities on. The, the highlighted areas within that, of course, have a little bit more special attention associated with that. The, under finance, we had our first quarter audit committee meeting was held on Monday, February the twelfth. Here again, it's another one of the transparency items that the city does by having our internal audit committee made up of a group of citizens. They do an excellent job going over the financial aspects. It's a very good group. I want to point out to the council, to the citizens that they really dig into any kind of issues. And it also gives the staff an opportunity to talk with them about, you know, as far as a, a first look at something. And the audit I know is coming up as well through Richard Platto and his, his department, they're kicking that off as well for the annual audit for the year. So that's always a major accomplishment for each year to have that completed. The, under the Clerk's Office, we continue to process a number of open records requests for all the citizens that don't know about that. You are entitled to have an open record for any any information the city has. Sharon Lowery's office and the City Clerk, they've processed that information. The Wellness Committee continues to do a excellent job within Human Resources. We've kicked off a few other things. There's a financial wellness portion that's been going on within that for our employees has good participation, both in person and also online because it is recorded for later for them to look at. And trying to continue to do some other exercise, healthy eating and socialization events for our employees. And the final thing I'll note is under Human Resources, we did fill the property and evidence technician within that department. They, within the Police Department, that is. And the Human Resources Department continues to work very closely with all our departments, but especially the police, since that is our largest department, to have those positions filled in a timely fashion. Mayor and Council, I'm glad to answer any questions on this report.
I have a question for somebody from Community Development, but I can't see to see who's here.
Richard's here.
About the seven violations of work without permit? And were there other consequences besides a fine?
Yes, the, that was just to get out of the court. He has to go back, have the house hire private engineer because we don't want to go in and inspect it.
Right.
So he has to have an engineer provide the letters saying that everything's okay.
And are there financial penalties related to permitting as well in this situation? Like, like if you don't get a permit?
Yes.
After the fact, is there consequences other than?
Yeah, your double fees.
Okay.
So.
All right. And is this someone that's done it before in Dunwoody?
Not to my knowledge.
All right. And then. That's it. Thank you for that. So I noticed that there was another incident in Exxon. I mean, there's always kind of an incident in Exxon. And I still wish we could figure out an approach that's legal, that holds businesses accountable, so we can talk about it over the next few months. Again, a de cab has delayed their enforcement of their nuisance ordinance to give the businesses more times, more time to get cameras. But it just seems to me that everyone should be responsible for keeping their customers safe. And so if we could just work on that somewhere along the line. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hanlon. Your team is here or Michael's going to introduce you. Sorry, that was not the name on here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. My name is Ann Hanlon. I'm the Executive Director of the Perimeter Community Improvement Districts. And we really, really appreciate your time. I wanted to share with you some of the communications and branding work that we're really busy working on. And I'm joined tonight by two of my colleagues, Ashley Jaberry and Will Battle, who are. Thank you. So I can give you a little, thank you so much. A little bit of background, I think everyone knows that the Central De Cab Perimeter CID was founded in nineteen ninety-nine as a special purpose tax district to help generate dollars from a voluntary tax on commercial property owners. And those dollars can be used to help fund infrastructure projects. So basically, that's it. We were founded in nineteen ninety-nine. The adjacent and abutting CID in, on the Fulton County side was founded in two thousand and one. We've done a lot of projects, including many with the city, and we really, really appreciate your partnership. One of the things that we have paid attention to a lot since COVID especially, I won't go back and talk about all the history of the CID and the projects. But since COVID, we've tried to, to really pay a lot of attention to property values and other things that are affecting property values and economic development activity within the CID. So obviously, since COVID, a lot of people have not been coming back into the office. That is a big global issue that every one of the office market is paying attention, attention to. In addition, in our market, we have the double whammy of the construction from two eighty-five, four hundred that is affecting the market and people's perception of it. So one of the things that we did last year is we did a big market survey of perceptions of the perimeter area. And you may have seen this, but I just wanted to go through some of them very quickly to sort of help you understand why we have decided to do this, like why have we decided now to, to rebrand perimeter and to start to commune, spend, spend money and put significant funding to helping communicate a positive message about the perimeter market. So these are some of the questions that we asked. We asked about perimeter being a nice place to live, a nice place to work with appealing shopping destinations. For those first three, you can see in the green bars, you know, overwhelmingly scoring pretty high. I think people have already have a pretty positive perception of the perimeter market. They think it is safe and clean and well-run, mostly thanks to the work of all of you in this room. As we go down the list, the, the numbers start to get a little bit lower. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that. When you ask about the ease of getting in and out of perimeter, right? Now we're going to start about the traffic questions. The ease of getting into the market, the ease of getting around the market, getting around the market on foot, like how easy is it to walk around the market? As we asked about enjoyable recreational options, only twenty-six percent of people said they, they were enjoyable recreation options in the district. And of course, we asked about the affordability of living there, also ranked a little bit low. So not, not to say that any of these things are facts or that they're truth, but we just wanted to take a measure of people's perceptions. Okay, this was one of our favorite ones. This is the, the word jumble. When we ask people to come up with words that would describe the perimeter market, you see things that jump out like traffic and busy and congestion. You know, there's also words that are, that come out like clean, clean and convenient, modern, fun. So this is, I, I wanted to sort of set this up because this is where we're starting. When our, our board, we shared these results with our board in the fall of last year. You know, we started to talk about what we needed to do to reinvest in the market. If this, if the market was developed primarily in the seventies and eighties and nineties, what could we do as an organization, knowing that we don't have full control or much control, frankly, of everything that happens there? What could we do to invest in the place and to help start to shape some of the perceptions of the market? And this is something that a lot of business districts are doing all around the country and certainly in Metro Atlanta. Districts that are trying to come back from COVID and dealing with things like traffic or public safety or cleanliness. And we, I, I think we, we probably all share a common goal is that we want perimeter, the values and perimeter to keep going up. And we noticed for the first time in two thousand and twenty-two, our tax digest started going down. So that's, that's a trend that we want to stop and we want it to go the other direction. We start, I'm going to introduce Ashley in a minute to specifically go over some of the brand elements. But we procured a marketing and communications firm last year. We actually settled on a firm out of London, Visual House. They do a lot of commercial real estate work and they help, have helped us come up with a lot of the content that you're going to see. Some of the things are very, very small, like talking about perimeter, you know, in traditional commercial real estate circles, people always talk about central perimeter or perimeter center. So some of it is as simple as just calling it perimeter to drop some of those old monikers that are starting to feel a little bit old and dated, especially when we're, we're competing with places like Midtown or the Battery or Nashville or Austin. And one, you know, the first thing they said was, you just need one word. So that's something that we're, we're working, we're working with your economic development staff, Michael Starling and staff at the other cities to try to get the word out with CoStar, the Atlanta Business Chronicle, and some of the big publications so that we have a recognizable name. Another change that we've made recently is we're making deliberate investments in public safety. We've already started some of that work with your, your city staff at the Dunwoody Police Department. We work closely with Chief Grogan, Deputy Chief Carlson, and Lieutenant Krieg to take a look at what the city had already invested in the district and how could we accent it? We certainly don't want to be in the public safety business, but we would like to invest in what you already do so well so that we can advertise to people that this is the safest, cleanest market in Metro Atlanta. That's what we always start with, is the safest, cleanest market in Metro Atlanta. We are in conversations with Sandy Springs and with Brookhaven to do the same. So that's an active conversation that is happening. All right, Ashley, I'm going to call you up so we can, we can show you, we're looking for your feedback. By the way, we want to show you a video and some of the brand images and some of the content that we're using. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and good, good evening, everyone. I'll walk us through what I, I think is the fun part that, of the brand identity and the communications work that we're doing. But first, I, I wanted to start before we dive into the logo and, and all of those imagery is to talk through a bit, you know, we've, we just checked in on perceptions of the market and what people think we are. But we wanted to do some digging through this branding effort and through the communications effort to understand who we really are. And so I think we want to first acknowledge and start off with the fact that perimeter has long been a base camp for business. And we want to acknowledge and honor that legacy of what has made this place thrive for, for decades. So we see ourselves still assured in that identity as a corporate playground, but we're much more than that, as you all know. We're an inviting experiential destination. We've ups the ante in terms of residential and we're a home seekers haven. And this is all with the best access that you can get in the region, particularly with the construction and the investments that have happened as of late at two eighty-five and four hundred. So with that in mind, we've, we worked with Visual House to develop a place-based identity for the district and for the market itself. Shown here in this logo, but I want to say that this is way more than just a logo or a word mark. This has, we've invested through this in a communications vehicle for the market, for us to help tell the stories of our business community and what we've become today. This is also seen as an asset for building a sense of place, which is something that the perimeter CID is very concerned with. You know, we want to make sure that people understand perimeter, the character of it, the essence of it. And so this adds and enhances that element as well. And in addition to that, it's a community building asset. So you'll see that we've also rolled out some social media, a private presence on Instagram just to really help people and the community at large connect with this place. So I'm going to play a quick video that helps introduce the brand and our tagline for you. Does anybody know how to get the audio to play?
Can someone from I T come and help with the audio? And chief, I just accidentally hit the panic button in case. You might want to let them know there's no panic.
Oh, okay. It's, well, with that, that's no problem. I'll just walk us through it. You guys can see the, the beautiful video and it's on our website if you ever want to watch it in, in real time for the audio component. But really, this video helps establish our identity. It really showcases and juxtapose the multi-faceted sides of this place of perimeter. So as you see here, we're a place where that's open with roads and we're open for business. We're a place for the nine to five and where people can stay for the five to nine as well. And so this video really helps to introduce our tagline, which you'll see towards the end. But we call perimeter and identify perimeter as a place where everything is falling into place, where it all works. And so that's the, how we're introducing, reintroducing perimeter to our community and to the region at large. So hopefully after this, you guys can go and watch it afterwards to cut great audio track and, and voiceovers. But I'll keep us moving along.
Good without the audio, so.
Good. It's beautiful without the audio.
Where, do you see that video of going on? Are you going to have airtime paying for broadcast commercial or where you see that being?
Actually, yes. Just to, to quickly answer your question, we've, we've started rolling this out primarily on social and used it as a way to introduce on our, our main communications vehicle being our website. That being said, we're also in the works to get some broader, more public advertisements out, both in the, the, you know, digital, out of home, on billboards, those types of things, radio, and then also YouTube, where people can kind of see this. So we're working on targeting right now and that should be rolling out later this spring. Okay, next technical thing. So I'll just showcase really quickly and walk us through audiences. As I mentioned, this is a primary communications vehicle for us to introduce perimeter to a variety of audiences. We see this definitely playing a strong role at the community level and to our residents, but also to our, our business community. And, and really, if you think about the perimeter CID's role in investing in this brand, we represent the commercial and business community, and this is an investment that they've made in themselves. We want this brand to really speak to that community as well, particularly thinking about our economic development and our community development initiatives and really recruiting and helping folks pay attention to perimeter because there's a lot to be had here. So want to make sure that this brand is both approachable to your everyday community member, but also speaks to the business audience. With this brand, we've added some color, a splash of color to our identity. You've seen probably for years with the perimeter CID's, we've had a reliable black and yellow reflecting roadway construction. But this really speaks to that multi-faceted character of the community, right? So again, we're not just a business community. We're so much more than that with that experience, that dining, but also our community at large is diverse. And so this is just a little bit of a look and a feel of the character of it. And also some imagery to help reflect where perimeter is today. This is not yesterday's, your, what they would say, your mom and dad's perimeter. This is a very modern, evolved place that is keeping pace with, with the community's needs at large. And then, as I mentioned, it's not just about advertising and having ads out in, you know, Atlanta Magazine. For us, we really do see this as a community building asset. So I wanted to give you some examples of what this, we intend this to look like. Right now, we're working with our city partners and, and others to try to start rolling this out and within the public realm. But as you can see, this helps us speak to the community and the community members at the ground level so that they can understand what's happening here. So it's about, you know, new development and exciting things that are happening, but also events and just a vehicle to really help us showcase the energy of the place. Here's another example here. I'll just quickly advance this. So to the communications work that we are focusing on this year, this is really about setting a great, strong foundation. So to the communications work that we are focusing on this year, this is really about setting a great, strong foundation. We've got the content in place. We have our website and we've invested in some communication vehicles that I will show you in just a bit. But I wanted to showcase to you what our board is, you know, intending to achieve, especially this year as we get underway. You know, they really want to increase brand awareness and recognition of the place of perimeter. So it's not just that have you heard of perimeter, but when you're in this, in the place that you know that you are here because the character of it is felt. In addition to that, as Anne said, it is one of our biggest assets in terms of safety and accessibility. And we want to communicate that, you know, to everyone who, who needs to know about that. So that is a big objective for, for our brand work this year and our communications work this year. In addition to that, it's about transitioning the two eighty-five, four hundred construction work, which has been many years in the making from a negative into a positive. And so really helping to highlight and tell that story. And then finally, making sure our CRE community is well-equipped with the story and this talking points about perimeter. So with that said, I wanted to quickly showcase some of those communications vehicles that we've invested in. We launched at the end of last year and are picking up the pace on social media, our website, our e-newsletter. We have an audience in particular for our e-newsletter that reaches about over twelve thousand contacts. That's contacts from the PCID's, from a perimeter connects, but also we've been building that as we've been rolling out. So this is about growing that audience and community and making sure that people feel like they know what's happening in perimeter. In addition to that, I wanted to introduce you to a social media campaign that we've been rolling out this spring. First and foremost, we've invested in a really cool flyover, hyper-real video rendering of the two eighty-five, four hundred project work. While construction cones are still out and about and people are wondering, when is this project going to wrap up? This video really helps re-energize that project. With that in mind, though, as you've probably noticed, we're using a hashtag called perimeter pretzel. It's a little bit more of a, something that we've heard members in the community call it unformally. And we've decided to adopt it as part of this campaign to help positively talk about this construction project. So it's a fun, very, you know, easy campaign on our social media to help tell that story. But the great news is that this video, these types of communication materials are available to our community organizations to share with others and help them understand the great work that's, an investment that's come through this project. So we're really excited about this vehicle. And then the last piece that I wanted to share with everyone, because I know I'm short on time, is just that this spring and the first week of June, we are planning an event with Biz Now. This is something that the City of Dunwoody and other city partners have partnered with us on. This year, perimeter CID's is going in as a presenting sponsor to really help make sure that this event helps tell the best story about our perimeter market. You'll see here the panel topics that we have. Really talking about the mega infrastructure investment from the two eighty-five, four hundred project. As well as how perimeter is modernizing its office market mix. We also are hoping to have our mayors come and speak and elected officials come and speak at this event to address the CRE community. Because we know you have a great story to tell and that's an important connection. So with that said, I'll wrap this up and open it up to any questions you may have.
Not touching anything. Does anyone have questions or comments? Go ahead.
You touched on community building and I wonder if you could maybe expand on that a little bit. And I'm also interested, we have Create Dunwoody, which is fairly new. And if you could also just let me know, have you been in touch with them? Is there gonna, do you have any overlap with, with their activities?
Yes, yes, actually, we've been connected with Jennifer at Create Dunwoody. And yes, our intent is really to partner. This is not just something that we see as the perimeter CID's doing on our own. We know that this work requires partnerships. So we absolutely want to bring in. We've been at the table with almost every partner that we, we have, including Create Dunwoody, to create these moments. As I mentioned, it's not just about having a great, you know, ad in Atlanta Magazine or whatever, you know, a public place there, there could be. While that's nice, I would say that it's more important that we're creating experiences and we're creating that sense of place. So partnerships with that of Create Dunwoody or Discover Dunwoody even is really important to us to make sure that we are helping to create and foster a sense of community here.
And I'll, I'll just add, yeah, we've, we've talked to Jennifer a few times. And even like with Discover Dunwoody, like I, I serve on Ray's board and Ray is very, very plugged into this. So it's, there, there's a lot of us that are working together to really be deliberate and think about it so that we're all growing in the same direction. Yeah, and I mean, the idea is that we're all using the same language and even though we all kind of have our own lanes, you know, maybe if, if Create Dunwoody is doing the creative part, obviously, and if Discover Dunwoody is focused on hotel room nights. And then we're focused on reaching out to the commercial real estate community. Even though we each have our own lanes, we're all talking together and using the same language. Which I think is important to the outside world, that they see us all, you know, singing off the same hymn sheet, so to speak.
Uh, John?
I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation. More importantly, thank you for all you do. Thank you for the partnerships, the, the shared experiences. And thank you for the public art, what you've done for the public art, especially along the Marta right there on Hammond, outstanding. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's, it's just, it's a, it's a pleasure working with you, pleasure finding ways to make the experience of living, working, moving through Dunwoody a better place. So all I can say is thank you for everything you've done. And you have my undying support going moving forward because you've proven yourself every single day that we've been a city. So thank you.
Uh, Joe?
So we have, I think it might be even on one of our agendas, we're working on gateway signage as well, you know. So we've got branding with that. Obviously, you worked with Michael Starling on that one. So we're gonna be doing gateway. In the, in the, off-periphery related is wayfinding potentially as well. And I'm, I'm just, like, I don't want to, I'm not micromanaging, right, or high level. I just like the in-state of people knowing that there are things here to go to. Versus, I'm just going to destination A and I don't know anything else around me within the next couple of miles. So I, I totally support any effort at all to help with a wayfinding effort as well. To show people that there are these amenities that are here in our community to share for not only, you know, visitors, but also residents as well.
But thank you for that and we, we support that too, obviously. I mean, I think we, you know, we've worked a lot with Michael Starling. I think we view the CID's role kind of as branding the place and getting people here and understanding that we're here and then supporting whatever the city decides to do on internal wayfinding.
Yeah, it's like.
It is important.
Right, once you're here, oh, by the way, oh, here, here's this, that and that. And of course, that's a challenge for the rest of myself and my peers. I mean, it says perimeter has enjoyable recreational options. That's the second to lowest, right? But I mean, there's Brookhaven and there's Sandy Springs as well. Obviously, they have to work within their own jurisdiction, municipality. So that's up to us and to, to look at our, our restrains, our constraints. You know, we, we have a new water park there, Splash Pad. I hope you guys are really selling that up as well. That's a brand new amenity. So anyway, thank you.
And I, we really feel like it's part of our job to help educate the business community on what else exists outside of the tiny confines of the CID. You know, for the first time this year, we're hoping to be out at Lemonade Days. And be a sponsor and just, you know, and, and get, get the employees to even know that there is such a thing. We're doing the same thing with the Cherry Blossom Festival in Brookhaven and to educate people on the Dunwoody Village or Brookrun Park. These, you know, if you're an employee who just comes in and out every day and you live somewhere else, you, you may not even be aware. But people are hungry for that. And so if, with this campaign, if we can help educate them on that, then hopefully it'll make the whole place seem a lot more cohesive.
Uh, Stacy?
I just want to second John on, um, thank you for being great partners with the city. It's just nice to know that we have all the confidence in you to help our perimeter, to help the perimeter. There, I said it. Also, I think the perimeter pretzel is brilliant. We finally have a name for that intersection and kudos to whoever came up with it. And I look forward to seeing that out on social media and I will start using it. Cause I was on the perimeter pretzel Friday night at ten thirty when it was raining. It was, it was a little tricky. So I'm very much looking forward to that pretzel being completed.
Yeah, we, we truly appreciate the partnership and I think that with every, every city department, every staff member, council. And I think the good news is that we're continuing to evolve what we're doing together, you know. Even the, the CID, you know, we, we've invested almost a hundred and seventy-five thousand, Chief. Um, and so deploying some new flock cameras in the CID, which is probably not something that the CID board would have entertained years ago. But now they view that as part of what is our responsibility to help all of you invest back in that place to keep it healthy. So we really, really appreciate the partnership. And with the perimeter pretzel too, I'll just note, we talked about Focus Brands and the connection there.
Sure, sure. Just so they know.
Sure. So Auntie Anne, everybody's favorite pretzel maker, is actually, it's a owner. Focus Brands is based in perimeter. And so there is a connection to pretzel itself. And we've, we've talked with them, we've been in talks with them about a partnership to help roll this out. So we're still working through the details of that, but they're, they're very supportive.
Okay, so thank you very much. This is fantastic. Kudos for being on the front end of what every commercial district of any substance in the United States and probably worldwide is going to have to do. And we are way in front. So kudos to you, really quite frankly, kudos to us. I am with mayors from all over the state and certainly have communications with mayors all over the country. And we are way ahead of everybody else in addressing what comes next aggressively and proactively. I was on the perimeter pretzel the other day and not at night and not when it was raining. But it is much easier to use from Ashford Dunwoody Road if you're going east. It's much easier to get on four hundred from there, Peachtree Dunwoody, Roswell Road. And even from Shambly Dunwoody Road, once you get used to the transition, it's easier. It just is. It was brutal to live through and it's not quite finished, though I think we're getting there. But in the end, it's really a nice set of road improvements. So, and I think that is a very positive way to message. Yes, it stunk to live through. You know, but we lived through it and now we have this much improved transportation options from Dunwoody. Because even though it, it was mostly in Sandy Springs, we took the brutal impact of it and we benefit maybe more than anybody else from the improvements. And then for, for the public's education, can you quickly tell us the borders of the CID? Like from where to where?
So, so we, we are in the commercial district only, so not residential, right?
Multi-family is considered commercial though, although they don't pay taxes into the CID, but, but they are part, they're in the footprint.
That's right. So the confines are roughly Ashford Dunwoody Road, right here. We go all the way up to Mount Vernon, so just north of City Hall. We go all the way down to Perimeter Summit Boulevard, which is just inside of two eighty-five. And then as you go over to Sandy Springs Barfield, which is right where Mercedes-Benz headquarters is, is our boundary on that side.
Is Pill Hill part of the CID?
Actually, a lot of it is not.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that.
Some of the medical office buildings are, but.
On Lake Kern.
On Lake Kern, but south of that, no.
Okay, thank you. Love what you've done. Love to see what is coming. Thank you for your partnership. We appreciate it. Anybody else? Thank you. And we know Dunwoody is your favorite child, but we won't tell anybody. And we're gonna take, unless you have anything else, we're gonna have a quick technology fix with the, the button I pushed. No, keep going. I don't know what my directions are coming from the back. Is he coming? We may keep going. Hold on. Thank you very much. Let me see. Oh, here it comes. He's coming to pull the, I pushed the button and he's coming to, so that I guess it's probably buzzing somewhere. Yeah. Right, I wasn't, I wasn't exaggerating. I lost my balance and I leaned in and it was there. Thank you. Appreciate that. Sorry for the drama. I'm pretty drama-free, right? Okay, now we have, oh, Sharon has to read this. Okay.
Moving into public hearing, we have a first read of MMSP twenty-four dash oh one. Review and consideration of a major master sign plan for forty-eight ninety-six North Peachtree Road, Kingswood Church, Allegra Denora.
Thank you.
Um, just before you start, I will be recusing myself from the public hearing as I am an active member of Kingswood.
We'll let you know when to come back. Okay.
So the two master sign plans that are before you all tonight are the first ever to go through this brand new process. So I'll spend a little bit of time.
Can you speak louder and into the microphone? Can you make sure it's on? Cause people in the back can't hear you very well.
It says it's on.
That, is that better? Yeah, it's on. Can you lean in maybe or?
Yeah, is this better?
Is that better? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the two master sign plans are the first ever to go through this brand new process. So I'll spend a bit of time setting the stage for you all and for everyone else who's here tonight. So they're part of a new process that you all might remember came before you a year ago when we did some updates to the sign code. We created this process. And it's a process for larger campuses to get all of their signs approved and then to go through the permitting process with that document. So it provides for visual consistency among all of the signs for larger campuses. So think, you know, High Street, State Farm, other larger groups like that. And it also allows certain specific requests for deviation from the code to allow for creativity and unusual circumstances. So there are three avenues. Master sign plans without any exemptions can just go through the permitting process. Ones with smaller exemptions, so like they mostly fit the code and there's just a few things that are different, would be handled administratively. And then larger exemptions, so i.e. larger requests from the code are going through first planning commission and then you all. So this graphic shows the two avenues for exemption from the code. There, the ones on the left are sort of smaller changes. So individual signs are maybe larger or taller. They're wanting to change the location of signs, use different materials, change the design. And then if any of those four changes are included with any of the changes to the right, we just route them all through the major master sign plan process. And that's the case with both of the cases before you tonight. So that's like asking for more signs and bigger signs overall. And I'm happy to return to this at any time. So there's four criteria that they, and they, within those, they need to choose from three to meet. So color scheme, lettering style, materials and location of signs to be posted on buildings. And so all of those are used to review for visual consistency within these developments. And the master sign plan process is triggered with any new common developments and any existing development over seven acres where total sign area is increasing or any sign location is changing. So common developments are sort of larger campuses that might share parking or access to roads. And so, you know, Kingswood Church and Emory Healthcare both fit that criteria. That's why they're both before you tonight. So the first case is MMSP twenty-four oh one, and that's Kingswood Church. So it went before planning commission on February thirteenth and they voted unanimously to recommend approval. There was no public comments and it was generally well-received by the planning commission. They had no particular notes on it. So the subject law is shown here. So it's zoned R one hundred, but it falls under the quasi-public slash institutional uses section of our sign code because it's used as a place of worship. So it's ten acres and it's developed with Kingswood Church and it's associated preschool. You can see here that it has two frontages. It has frontage on Tilly Mill Road to the left and on North Peachtree Road to the right. And that bottom yellow star is where that, that sign is with the three crosses. That's kind of a landmark in the community. So as part of a new signage project for the whole property, they received a sign permit last year for two new monument signs. Those are shown in the red stars and four new wayfinding signs. Those are shown with the red dots. Because these signs met the standards of the code and because they split their signage project up, they've been working on it for a few years at this point. So it's been a long time coming. No master sign plan application was required for those two signs. But they're now proposing additional signs in new locations and they're requesting exemption from the code. So that's why it's here before you all tonight. So that's why it's here before you all tonight. Um, and I believe those new signs have recently been installed within the last week or so, um, but the applicant might be able to tell us more. So they're proposing two new signs to complete their signage project for the campus. Um, so they're proposing a monument sign that's shown in the top right. Um, that's gonna replace where the, um, existing non-conforming sign with the three crosses is. So at North Peachtree Road and Tilly Mill, this sign, um, conforms to the sign code in terms of size and height. Um, but they're requesting three monument signs and technically they're only allowed two as part of the code. So that's the reason for the exemption. And then they're also requesting this building entrance wall sign to be placed on the preschool entrance facade. So across from Tilly Mill Road. Um, it would go right underneath the existing cross that they have. You can see that in the bottom right. Um, and building entrance wall signs are designed to be super small. They're a maximum of four square feet and only six feet above ground. So really designed to sit right next to the door. In this case, they're requesting a sign that's bigger and taller than that. So this shows the view in the direction of the signs. So you can see the preschool sign is to the left and it's sort of directly across from Tilly Mill. And at the bottom, it, the new monument sign would really be directly at the intersection of Tilly Mill and North Peachtree. So this chart shows the regulations of what is allowed per code versus proposed. I won't go into it in depth. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to go back to it and explain anything else. These photos show the existing facade where the building entrance wall sign would go. Um, so on the left, that's kind of a zoomed in version from the parking lot. And on the right, that's, uh, what the area that it would be as shown from Tilly Mill Road. So you can see that you have to look down a bit. The, um, church is set below the grade of the road. These photos show the existing sign with three crosses that would be replaced with the monument sign. Um, so the left is what it looks like sort of directly on the sidewalk. And then the view to the right is shown from the middle of the intersection, basically. So the master sign plan proposal addresses visual consistency through the color scheme, lettering style and materials. Um, both the two previously permitted monument signs and the third proposed monument sign use, um, ashler stone as a base and simulated stained glasses and accent. The wayfinding signs also have a vinyl application that also simulates the stained glass. And both of these materials match the materials used in the church building as well. Um, all the signs also use the same lettering style. So overall staff finds that there is visual consistency amongst all of the proposed signs. Um, the proposed monument sign is of a consistent size and scale to existing signs in the area. Um, Saint Patrick's Episcopal Church and Saint Barnabas Anglican Church have monument signs of a similar size and scale. Um, the proposed building entrance wall sign is also at a reasonable scale for context. Wall signage in commercial areas is typically allowed to be ten percent of the facade. Um, and so this sort of fits right in line with what would be allowed in a commercial area. The subject property is pretty unusual since it exists at the corner of North Peachtree Road and Tilly Mill Road. So it has two frontages, but really there's kind of a third right where that intersection is. Um, so they have somewhat unique visibility concerns. Um, the existing sign at the quarter of North Peachtree Road and Tilly Mill Road is non-conforming. We don't even really have a sign type in the sign code that it matches. And it's much larger and much taller than would be, than what would be allowed for a monument sign. So staff finds that the proposed monument sign is an improvement for the property since it replaces a non-conforming sign with a conforming sign that's at a better scale for pedestrians. The topography for the subject property is pretty unusual. The church and preschool building sit approximately fifteen feet below the grade of Tilly Mill Road. Um, so them requesting that additional height for the, for the building entrance wall sign is to make up for the fact that the, that the building is set below the road. Um, so staff finds that they have some unique visibility concerns that necessitate a higher and larger, um, building entrance wall sign than what would be permitted by code. Um, so overall we are recommending approval of the request for the master sign plan and I'm available for any questions.
Uh, not yet. So next we hear from the applicant. If the applicant would like to say anything, is somebody here from Kingswood? You don't have to say anything. You can just come up and introduce yourself and be available for questions. Should there be any? Um, if Allegra has shared everything.
Thank you very much, Allegra. My, my name is Paul McKeever. I'm an architect and a member at Kingswood. And I'm here to answer any questions that, that you all may have for us. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Um, unless I see any objections, seeing none, the public hearing is opened. Uh, if there is anyone here to speak for the applicant or for the application, you don't have to speak necessarily for the applicant. We have ten minutes per side. Um, just come on up. All right. I don't see anybody. Is there anyone who would like to make public comments against this application? All right. I don't see, you also have, that side would also have ten minutes, but I don't see anyone. And so unless there's an objection, I close the public hearing. And now we will answer a question, uh, yeah, we will not answer, we will ask questions. Um, or comments, anybody? John?
Thank you. I've reviewed the project and I was, uh, very pleased with the whole layout of it. You did a wonderful job coloring and all the rest. Kudos. Um, the question I have really regards the corner sign, the one at the intersection. Can you pull that up again? It looks. All right. So that looks like it's relatively close to the ground. If you now go forward two slides, you can see the original. Yeah, uh, right there. There's a whole bunch of bushes and topography below it. Are you clear cutting all of that? Or is there your sign gonna be up and above and more at eye level view?
Yes, um, thank you for the question. The, uh, the sign itself, it has a, a stone base.
Yes.
That's about three foot tall. And all of the plantings, there would be plantings in front of that. It's actually a, uh, the sign is gonna be on a radius. So it's concentric with the intersection. Uh, the curvature of the curbs.
I was just wondering if this new sign is gonna go where, let's say your current sign is, or is it gonna go much lower and closer to the street?
Approximately where the current sign is.
Okay.
Forty feet back from the curb.
Okay. All right. Sounds great. Again, I was just wondering about the, the bushes and the, the plantings in front. It sounds like that's, a lot of that's gonna stay.
There, uh, there, there may be new plantings because of the, the construction activity to get the sign and the base in there. Uh, but there definitely will be plantings in front of the stone base.
And forty feet back. It sounds like it's gonna be well protected. If a, if an errant car goes straight towards the sign, it sounds like there's some protection for the sign.
Oh, yes, indeed.
All right. Wonderful. I'm very happy with the project. Thank you so much.
Uh, Tom?
Um, yeah, no, I really don't have any questions. I'll just, just a comment. I've seen, uh, the, the replacement monument sign on the North Peachtree. Uh, that's already up and I think it looks fantastic. So, uh, if the rest of it and that, look, you know, looking through the materi-, uh, the presentation, it all appears to be consistent with that. So I can't wait to see the finished product. Looks nice.
Anybody else? Is this allowed to be on consent? Or no, I guess it's, cause it's a second read. Okay, nevermind. It is? Oh, I do. Does anybody object to consent? Okay, thank you. All right. Sharon has to read it. Oh, yeah. She's coming. She's coming. She's coming.
The next item is a first read of MMSP twenty-four dash oh two. A review and consideration of a major master sign plan for forty-five fifty-three North Schalke Road, Emory Healthcare, Allegra Denora.
Thank you. Um, so this is the second case before you all tonight. It's for the new Emory Healthcare Campus. So it went before planning commission on February thirteenth and was unanimously recommended for approval. Um, there was one public comment against and that was included in your packet. So the master sign plan is for the Emory redevelopment, which you're all already familiar with since it came before you all as a rezoning in twenty twenty-two. So that was RZ twenty-one dash oh four. They have an existing ambulatory surgery center that they're keeping. That's the building to the left on the site plan. And then they're adding a new medical office building and a parking garage. Those are to the right on the site plan. Um, and those are currently under construction. The rendering to the left is what was included in the rezoning. So you can see that it shows two wall signs that they're requesting tonight. Since it's a new common development, you know, sharing parking, curb cuts, et cetera, they're obligated to do a new master sign plan. And since they're really redoing all of the signs on the site, you'll see a bit more detail here than you did on my presentation for Kingswood Church. So I'll go through them step by step, starting with the monument and wall signs. So they're proposing to keep one existing wall sign that's shown in the yellow, or excuse me, in the blue star, um, on the ambulatory surgery center on the left. Um, and they are building two new wall signs. Those are shown in yellow on the medical office building to the right. The red stars are three monument signs, one of which, the one on North Schallford Road is a reface. And the other two are new monument signs. So there are two existing monument signs on the property. Um, this view is shown as you go north on North Schallford. Um, so the one on the left is the one that's gonna be refaced. And then the one on the right is going to be removed and replaced with a much smaller wayfinding sign. So this is the monument reface. So the monument sign is larger than what's allowed per code. You can see what's allowed per code outlined in yellow. Um, the photo to the left is the existing monument sign. And so they're just gonna reface it in the same footprint. Um, what, what it will look like afterwards is shown on the right. Um, since it's just a reface, you know, we consider it just sort of some updated maintenance. They're swapping out the panels. Um, even though it's larger, they don't need relief from the code, uh, for that, since it's just sort of an updated version. And so these are the two new monument signs. The one on the left is going to be at the curb cut on Pernashell Court. You can kind of see that on that little site plan right next to it. And then the one on the right is going to be interior to the site, um, between the ambulatory surgery center and the medical office building. You can see it in the little red star on that site plan. Um, both of these conform to the sign code for height and square footage. Um, the property is only allowed two monument signs. And so with that refacing monument sign, they would have three. Um, so that's sort of the request for the monument signs. And here are the two proposed new wall signs for the medical office building. Both of them are taller than what's allowed per code. Um, but neither of them are above the maximum, um, wall area that's, or wall sign area that's allowed, excuse me. So the rendering on the left, uh, is pretty helpful. It shows them both on the medical office building. And so the viewpoint for that rendering is from, uh, the curb cut on Pernashell Court. And the picture to the right shows how the site slopes down as you get closer to the medical office building from sort of the intersection of North Schallford and Pernashell Court. And so, um, that's why they're requesting taller wall signs to sort of accommodate that. And this picture shows the existing ambulatory surgery center wall sign that they're leaving in place, not touching it, just keeping it as is. And then these photos sh- show the new medical office building under construction. The picture to the left is the view from across Pernashell Court. Um, so that would be sort of the rear wall sign is gonna be on there. And the one on the right shows, uh, that viewpoint from the curb cut and the gray area is where the frontmost wall sign would be. So they're proposing eight new wayfinding signs, sort of scattered all over the property as shown here. And so per code, they're limited to two wayfinding signs. So they're requesting six more than they're allowed. Um, additionally, three of them are the size allowed by code, but the others are a bit bigger, approximately twice as large. Um, and so that size that's allowed per code is three feet tall and six square feet. So pretty small. Um, as a quick note, for all the signs that are larger than what's allowed per code, we required them to do a site distance analysis. Um, and so that showed that none of them pose any visibility concerns to either drivers or pedestrians. So we have no concerns about those. This chart shows the exemptions. Since you all are approving the master sign plan in totality, um, I won't dwell on any of the specifics. But again, I'm happy to return to read if you have questions about the specific exemptions. So the master sign plan proposal should, addresses visual consistency through the color scheme, lettering style and materials. Emory has a really, um, cohesive look for all of their developments that they've had for years. I'm sure you've seen them all over metro Atlanta. And so they're sticking to that sort of corporate look here. Um, all the proposed signs use the same navy blue background color, the same white text and arrows and the same gold and blue accent colors. Um, the two proposed monument signs are gonna match the base of the existing monument sign. And all the proposed signs use the same lettering style as well. So overall staff finds that the, uh, master sign plan does provide visual consistency and shows some pretty high quality looking signs. And the signs are also of a consistent size and scale to signs in the existing, or existing signs in the surrounding area. There's an Emory sign on the other side of the street at fifty-five hundred or forty-five hundred, excuse me, North Schallford Road has an existing monument sign of a similar size and shape to the proposed refacing of the existing monument sign. And the two new proposed monument signs are of a similar size and shape as the ground signs for both North Schallford Plaza and Independent Square in the area. The topography for the subject property is a little unusual, as I alluded to earlier. The property slopes down from the corner of North Schallford and Pernashell Court toward the eastern property line. And the new medical office building sits below the intersection. Um, due to the change of grade, staff finds that unique visibility concerns exist for the medical office building that necessitate higher wall signs than what is permitted by code. Um, additionally, the needs of a healthcare campus are somewhat unusual compared to typical office buildings that would be in an office institutional zoning district due to the large numbers of visitors who are only occasionally going to the site and really need to orient themselves once they're there. So, you know, patients, staff and delivery trucks all need to be able to figure out, you know, where the, where the right buildings are for them. Where are the right vehicular entrances, the parking, everything like that. Um, and staff also finds that the monument sign request is fairly minor in nature, given that the new monument signs will conform to the code in every aspect except for the maximum sign count for that sign type. So we are recommending approval for this request.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Is there a representative of the applicant? If you want to, same as I did for Kingswood, you can say a lot or a little. Just introduce yourself and be available to take questions or comments.
Sure. Thank you, Mary. My name's John Barrow. I'm with Miller EG Design. We've been working with Emory Healthcare for thirty-five years almost, and it's a joy and privilege to work with you. Don't have anything else to say. I think Allegra has really fantastic jobs.
Right. It was a lot of work, these two applications coming at the same time and being the first. It was a lot of work. We appreciate Allegra. Um, doing it all and event, sort of getting the process for the future defined. All right. Questions or comments? As, oh, thank, you're right. Thank you. I even have a sheet. Unless there's an objection, I'll open public hearing. Um, there will be ten minutes for if anyone is here to speak for the application. Seeing none, if anyone is here to speak against the application, we have ten minutes. Uh, seeing none. Um, so with, uh, uh, without, unless there's an objection, I close the public hearing. And now we can have questions and comments. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Allegra, for the presentation. I have questions regarding, uh, the wall signage, uh, illuminati- luminization. There was a public comment regarding that. I'm not sure if it was discussed during the planning commission. Tell me what the proposal is and the allowances. Tell me about the illumination.
Yeah. So it was discussed during the planning commission. Um, so we have here, um, an image that the applicant shared with me earlier today, um, showing that the, what the sort of illumination style would look like at night, since I know that the comment against, um, addressed that specifically. And do you want to talk more about the lighting type?
Uh, it's a traditional halo lit style. It's an official sign type, and that's actually what's required by code. So it's a little bit lower key illumination.
And what facing, who does that face? Does that face what street? Who, who does that, which?
Yeah, that faces Pernashell Court, um, and sort of the, the corner as it curves over towards North Schallford.
Okay. And as far as the requests from the residents, I mean, we give a lot of businesses and, you know, in different places. This is now a budding single family residential. And I believe the resident that's asking for the no lights lives in that area. How does, how does it affect that type of property? Or I guess I'm just, it's the in and out. I'm just, when are they gonna see the lights?
Yeah. So the intent, um, behind the, the illumination is to sort of be on at all times. But the applicant has indicated that they're willing to, um, you know, consider sort of turning them off during certain hours potentially at night. Um, if, if the city council, um, wants to include that as part of a condition for approval.
But I, if that's true, sir, I appreciate your willingness and your, your customers' willingness to do so. You're not having too many visitors at nine o'clock at night and with all the other signs that are being allowed, size and scope. Everybody knows you're there. So it's not like you're getting new business from that lighting. So it sounds like if you could make the community happy by removing those lights or turning those lights off. Nine, from eight to eight or whatever's reasonable, something like nighttime.
Was midnight previously, so we were gonna put a timer on this one to turn on.
Well, that would be great. If we could, uh, staff work with the applicant to have a condition for the second read. Well, that would be great. If we could, staff, work with the applicant to have a condition for the second read, that would be appreciated by me. I'm not sure if it's appreciated by anybody else on council. So, but thank you, sir. That's, that's, that's the first thing I wanted to talk about. And then Allegra, you made a statement that all signage on the property was being updated. Actually, I'm not sure if that's true. Can you tell me about the Dunwoody Trails Townhomes signs that's there on the corner that has an easement? Is that being updated as well?
Yeah, so that is not on their property, technically.
Okay.
That is, yeah.
It's on our property. Right away.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand because that, that there was an easement, there was a whole bunch of negotiations back in the day, that's allowed to stay. Okay, it's a different property owner. I just want to make sure that it's a very visible sign at your corner. And I wanted to, wondered if there was any consideration talking with them, since you're updating everything else. I just wonder if there's any, making sure, number one, that that stays, or that the applicant is in discussions with that.
Yes, we're very aware of that, and we've actually already been in touch with the property owner and got their permission to add a small little panel on it that says Emory with an arrow. Because there's no space for Emory to have a corner sign there, so, but they were very, very happy to accommodate.
Great, as long, if they're happy, I'm happy. I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that that sign is there and that they have the rights to be there. So thank you so much. No other questions?
Oh, Stacy.
The monument sign. I don't know. The monument signs, is, you are calling it Emory at Dunwoody?
We're calling it Emory at Dunwoody from the road sign on the monument. Okay. Emory Healthcare is the master organization, and that is the branding on the building. Now, I'm told that things could change in a meeting this week, but that's the current plan.
I will say that I really like the Emory at Dunwoody's. It's a little placemaking.
It was gonna have plastic surgery.
It came into effect about seven years ago, so.
Good, okay.
Okay, Rob, Tom.
Yeah, my only comment is, is right along the same lines as what John was bringing up with the illuminated wall sign. And I don't know if that has to be added as an official condition or not, but I would support that for the, for the benefit of the residents. It might have some new glaring lights into their bedrooms or wherever.
Yeah, staff can draft a condition for the next meeting if you all choose to adopt it with that condition.
I think there's enough consensus in the room that, but I think midnight is too late. I don't, I, Dunwoody pretty much closes up at, especially that part of Dunwoody around ten-thirty, eleven. I think ten-thirty, eleven is appropriate. And I actually think it's not unreasonable to have them back on at six o'clock in the morning, because it's dark and you will, because you have an ambulatory surgery center. If, if we're going to be, if, for y'all, I don't actually think it matters if it's on at nine at night, but it needs to be on in the morning. So when you work on the condition, consider as early as possible to turn it off. But I think it needs to be open because it's usually dark at six a lot of the year, so. Can you? This is maybe a question for Eric, or nobody's here. So we have an agreement that people can park there on the weekends. Is there any sign that indicates that, or how are we handling that? Do we know?
Yes, we have put up signs now, and I know that the police weren't forcing that somewhat.
No, that, no, the public can park on hospital property on the weekends.
That's correct.
Is there going to be any signage that indicates that?
Yes.
Okay.
There will be.
But it won't be put up by Emory. It's going to be put up by us.
Put that up once everything's complete.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, thank you. We'll need to see it because we'll have to vote on the condition, so this can't be consent, but thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments? John?
Just a point of information that I missed the last meeting, and so I'm, I'll vote for it, but I wasn't.
Right. Anybody else have questions or comments on anything on here?
Move to approve.
Move by Joe.
Second.
Second by Tom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And Sharon, you are up again, or Jessica, whoever's.
Moving to business items, we have a resolution to, for a budget amendment. Let me read that into the record. A resolution amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three for the general state confiscated opioid settlement ARPA grant, hotel motel, motor vehicle, and municipal court funds of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia pursuant to Article Five, Section Five of the Charter of the City, beginning January one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Appropriating, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures from exceeding actual funding sources. Richard Plata.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a budget cleanup agenda item for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. As stated, aligning, among many things, aligning expenditures with authorized appropriations. Couple of, I'll point out two things. First of all, within the general fund, we did see an increase in revenue compared to budget in the general fund, and expenditures came in slightly under at about three percent, two or three percent of budget. So we had a budgeted use of fund balance of five hundred and eight thousand dollars. We will not need that use of fund balance this year, I say this year, twenty-twenty-three within the general fund. As a matter of fact, I do think revenues will end up above expenditures within the general fund in twenty-twenty-three. Our audit started today, so we will get clearer indication there as the audit progresses. So very good news within the general fund. The other piece of good news is within the hotel motel fund. That came in, total hotel motel fund was just a shade under six million, about five point nine million dollars. Based on how we divvy it out, two point three million dollars went to Discover Dunwoody. Two million dollars went to the general fund, and then a one point seven million roughly stayed within the hotel motel fund for tourism-related projects. So those are the two highlights, I'll call it. There's various budget adjustments to the grant funds and things like that as well for grant activity through the year. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody? I have a quick question. The three hundred thousand that overflowed from the Georgia Power franchise fees, is that reflected yet or not yet?
It is not in this memo, so we got that after I did this.
Okay, the memo is the same as last time.
Correct.
Okay. All right. And so that puts us, you'd think, at about a ten-month reserve.
That is correct. Yes, I think we'll be close to a ten-month reserve. It would be in the general fund, and that's on assigned fund balance.
Okay.
When, when the books are closed. That's our estimate right now. Again, subject to change based on the audit results.
All right, go ahead.
All right.
No, you're fine.
Move to approve?
We can do other questions. There's a motion on the floor. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, Richard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes.
Item number eleven is approval to purchase signal poles for pedestrian hybrid beacon installations on perimeter center west and North Peachtree Road. Michael Smith.
Good evening. The, there's two purposes of this agenda item related to two projects. One, they're both hybrid beacons. An example is in your packet, a photo of one. One is on perimeter center west next to the mall, and the other is on North Peachtree in front of Chestnut Elementary School. Two, two parts to this. One is that we wanted to go ahead and purchase the actual decorative poles ahead of the contract being awarded because of the lead time for those materials. We're trying to time this to build it in summer while school is out. So the action item is to approve the purchase, and it's actually two, two, two different locations. So it's really two different projects, but we just, since the total was over fifty thousand, we're bringing it to the city council to approve a sole source purchase from our vendor that has the, the standard decorative poles we use. So that, that's the action item. And then the second part of this is just a discussion in preparation for awarding a contract at the next meeting. We, we got the bids back in on the actual construction last Thursday after the memo went out. And we had two bidders, and the low bidder was Sunbelt. With a combined total for both, we bid the two projects together for efficiency. But the combined total was four hundred nineteen thousand nine twenty-four. That is within the budget we have allocated for these two locations. And so we'll be recommending award of that part of it at the next meeting. But for tonight, it's approval of the purchase of the, the poles.
Okay, so for efficiency sake, let's start with questions about purchasing of the poles. If there are any, it's an action item. So anyone want to say something, question, comment? Okay, it's an action item.
Move to approve.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further question? Oh, Joe.
This is with the installation of the poles. Should I defer that?
Yes, this is just, we're just approving the purchase of the pro, just to keep it clean. All right, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimous. Now, Joe can ask you the question he was going to ask you.
Hey, Michael, so for the email, you know, I'm a dreamer, aspirational. One day, not if, but when, there potentially can be a, a side path multi-use trail, some type of facility along North Peachtree in that section. So you did reply back, there's about thirteen feet of right of way on that segment. If you move the curb in, get rid of the bike lane. So I'm not going to do engineering design. I don't know what the width would be. As, as a minimum, then, if we just stick with what the current as-is, just put it right within the edge of the right of way. Then I would have just imagined that that would be just some type of a small choke point just at that one section. Let's say it was whatever width it was, it would just have to narrow it that one segment and move on forward. I'm, I'm a big fan of having the landscape buffer, the separation, right, between the cars and, and the users of the facility, so.
Right, yeah, there's, we would have thirteen feet to work with. We would, the plan is to put this pole at the very back of the right of way. So that, that would leave us, you know, ten, eleven feet between the curb and the pole to, to put a future path in. So there would be, you know, most of that, we would plan the landscape buffer, but right at the pole where the crossing is, we would have to narrow down and may potentially have no buffer. It's, I think it's not as much of a concern there because you do have that, that extra kind of carpool lane. So you do have some separation from traffic, even without the buffer. And it would probably be a short, a short stretch, you know, maybe not more than twenty feet or, I don't know, thirty feet, say. Where you would have to kind of go narrow down at the pole. But the only, the only other option would be to acquire right of way, I mean, to, to get a full buffer in there.
So, so I have a question. Where is this going? I know you said in front of Chestnut, but where?
The existing crosswalk.
In front of this, literally in front of the front door, not the one by the parking lot. Okay, so one challenge with this area is, is that the neigh, the people, the parents that, that walk have for decades been begging for a wider sidewalk or a path, whatever it's going to be, they need more room. Does, if we go ahead and put this before we widen, however we're going to do it, does it prohibit us from ever widening it?
Well, on the west side, I mean, I think.
I guess my first question is, is, is this on both sides, or is it just on the Chestnut side?
The pole's just on the Chestnut.
The pole is just on the chest, so, so, okay. How do you get it if you're coming to Chestnut in the morning? How do you push the button?
Push button.
Okay, but not a big pole. Okay, gotcha. Because in the example at perimeter center, there's two, it's a bigger thing.
Yeah, okay, wider road.
Right, well, right. And so, okay, so there'd be one pole with the lights. It'll be on the school side where there's a lot more room. Then on the other side where there's virtually no room. Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So I, I mean, I think eventually, because of the sidewalk on the east side, it's four feet wide.
Right.
So I think both sides would need to be widened at some point, provide more room. So this wouldn't affect the east side. On the west side, in front of the school, is where we're talking about.
Right.
Right at the pole, you would still have about ten or eleven feet to work with. So you could, you could put in a wider.
Right, but there's, because it's, the walkway of the school goes, there's a lot of concrete right there already. Because the walkway of the school, so there's, there's room there for people to wait as opposed to the other side of the street. Okay. Anybody else, John?
So, Michael, I'm looking at the plans. You're taking a lane out in the sense of you're adding concrete in front of the school there. I'm looking at this hash marked.
Oh, we're not, we're not going to take the pavement out. We're going to stripe it out.
Okay, so that, so that's maybe good and bad. So, okay, so you're not putting concrete there. You're not extending the concrete. You're just putting paint.
Right, we were, we were concerned about taking it out altogether because they do use it for carpool.
I know it's used for carpool, but it is one lane, basically thirty feet to the north just before the driveway. And you really, you'd be adding concrete or narrowing the street just for that one little segment. I'm just trying to think of the safety aspect of it for crossing two lanes versus now crossing three. Just historical, historical, my kid almost got hit by a car in that third little lane, so I'm kind of really aware of it. I'm just trying to think of what's best right there.
The best thing would be for kids to go further, and I'd like to go up to the corner of Peachford, right? And cross there, because it's only two, it's only, it's two lanes there, but getting people to change their habits.
Right. I guess I, when I was looking at the drawing, I didn't know what I was looking at, because.
Yeah, we talked about it a fair amount because there's trade-offs both ways, and that's where we landed with. Right now, it's not striped out. It's just like an extra lane.
Right.
So that's where we landed with striping it out so that, you know, other than right when the carpool lane is queued up there, the people shouldn't be in that area. So it does, you know, make it a two-lane crossing. But we, we, it's already, the traffic already backs up in North Peachtree there, and we were concerned about taking out another, I don't know, six to eight car lengths, and then just having, part of the thought was, either way, if you back the traffic up in the North Peachtree, you're still going to have the issue of somebody trying to cross between stopped cars.
Right.
And, and people not being able to see as they step out from a stopped car. So we felt like it was better to have that, have the cars stopped in the carpool lane than in the through traffic. Because, you know, then, then you are still protected before you kind of actually step out into the road.
Again, I'm not an engineer. I'm just looking at it from the safety perspective. This might need, if you could just double-check everything, because again, right now, we're looking at your stop bar. It doesn't go through the check, the, you know, the hatched line.
Because cars really shouldn't be in that area, that's.
Yeah, but the paint's not going to stop her, that's your concern. So, maybe we're getting overhead, but take a look. Please, just take a look at it, triple-check everything, and I trust your judgment.
Right.
Uh, yeah, Mike, I just had a question. This, this project, is, is it just the beacon? And my reason for asking, I know that there was, had been a request and to perhaps doing something similar to what's like down near Chambly High School, where there's actually a fence along the road. So the beacon's great if people cross where they're supposed to, but people don't always do that, especially young children that are running to get to school or catch up with their friends. So I, you're probably familiar with, what's down at Chambly High School, but for those that may not, they have a beacon similar to what we're looking to install, and then there's a fence along the side of the road, so people have to cross at the beacon. They can't shortcut it and run across the road. So is, I don't know if that's even an option because of the, the way the road is set up. But is that something we have looked at at all, or, or could consider as a part of this to, to help make sure that people are crossing where they're supposed to be crossing?
All right, we can look at it on the school side. I wonder, you know, and I'm not out there every day, but I wonder if it's less of an issue here because it's not, it's younger kids that are probably with parents, and there is a crossing guard there. So I, I'm, I've never heard, I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but I've never heard complaints about people not crossing at the crosswalk. I know down at, at the high school, you, you've got high school students walking, and they'll, they'll walk wherever. I've, I've seen it. But, but I'm not, I mean, we could look at it here, but I'm not sure if it's as much of an issue.
Yeah, I've been down in front of Chestnut and observed the behavior, but it was, it was a request from a parent there. So I, I don't know if it's behavior they have observed.
There's, with the apartment complex that's walking to, like, just a block or two down, we want them to cross with the crossing guard, because we don't want them running across the street. But there's, I think, I haven't been over there in a while, but there are a lot of older elementary school kids walking home, younger siblings. It would be interesting as, before school's out, to do some kind of observation of what's happening in real time. Some of that has to be managed. Some of that has to be managed by the school. You can put up a fence, but the kids could still be dashing down the street. And they do have a crossing guard. Yeah.
If you, maybe if you have that, the resident that.
Yeah, I should be able to pull that up and send that to you.
We can reach out to them.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rob.
One thought, just because you mentioned Shambly High School, I don't know that there's room for it, but that crossing in Shambly also has a refuge between the two lanes for people crossing at the beacon. So I, I, maybe something to think about down the road if we do some other work there. But it seems like there, and you know, maybe in front of Peachtree Middle, there might, there are some high-traffic areas that maybe we can just, let's keep that in the back of our mind, looking forward.
Yes, okay. We'll see this when you bring it to us. Thank you. All right, public comments? Uh, air, right, good. Uh, city manager comments?
Yes, ma'am, mayor, we do need a short executive session for real estate.
Okay, all right, any further, any council comments? Nope, okay, I need a motion for executive session for real estate.
Move to adjourn to executive session for purposes of real estate?
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Get back.
Move to adjourn.